The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good evening and welcome. The October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. Dr. Campbell, would you please read the board commitment statement?
Thank you, Chair, gladly. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form that is located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 P.M. The procedure is applicable for each or on a separate sheet. Good evening, Ms. Martinez-Johns. Would you please call roll?
Dr. Allison Campbell, District One.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three. Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District Four.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District Five.
Here.
Marasha Lafonte, Lakewood High School. Isaac Smith, North Marion High School.
Here.
Dr. Danielle Brewer, interim superintendent.
Yeah.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, school board attorney.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Johns. Um, Dr. Brewer, you're going to share with us who's leading the pledge this evening?
Yes, good evening. Um, Ms. Melissa Connor will introduce a member of the Ocala Film Derby, and she will share some remarks about the incredible event that took place a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Good evening, Board Chair and Board Members. In just a bit, you're going to hear a lot more about the Ocala Film Derby, but before we start, I want to introduce the special participant of the event to the podium. Kelvin Nomar Rivera Cruz is a senior at Forest High School and serves as the executive producer for film for the school's award-winning television network program. Since joining the digital video production course as a sophomore, Kelvin has become a leader in visual storytelling, helping guide projects that have earned recognition at the local, state, and national levels. Kelvin was recently honored as a $5,000 scholarship recipient of the Ocala Film Derby. This, however, was extra special because his peers voted on it. All students were asked to observe seniors during the Derby and identify those they felt were most deserving of the scholarships, measuring key skills such as leadership, communication, bridge-building, and time management. In addition to the scholarship, Kelvin continues to use his passion for film to inspire others, creating meaningful stories that connect people and spark emotion. And without further ado, Kelvin.
Good evening, um, members of the Marion County School Board and honored guests. Uh, my name is Kelvin Nomar Rivera Cruz, and I'm proud to be a senior at Forest High School, the executive producer of film for our Student Television Network Club, and a scholarship recipient from, um, the Ocala Film Derby. Um, when I joined digital video production class as a sophomore, I never imagined how far this journey would take me. From local to state to national recognition, video production has become more than just a class or a hobby. It's been my bridge between creativity and the world around me. Through film, I've learned how to express ideas, connect with others, improve my communication, and manage responsibility and deadlines. Filmmaking has, uh, filmmaking has given me the voice to share not just my story, but stories that others can see themselves in. Each new project, whether big or small, reignites my passion for storytelling. In video production, you don't just grow as a filmmaker, you grow as a person. Uh, a few weeks ago, I had the privilege of, uh, competing in the Ocala Film Derby, where I met professionals in the industry and attended workshops that, uh, deepen my understanding of filmmaking. Uh, we were honored, um, uh, we were mentored by experts who shared advice, challenged our skills, and encouraged, uh, our creativity. The experience only improved my technical abilities, but it, uh, strengthened my, uh, drive to tell stories that move and inspire others. Thanks to the scholarship I received through the Ocala Film Derby, I feel more motivated than ever to keep pursuing my dreams. Opportunities like this remind us students that our stories, uh, matter and all that our community, uh, believes in our potential. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you to everyone who makes programs like this possible. You've helped students like me to take one step closer to turning our dreams into reality. Um, I would like to give a special thanks to, uh, Mr. Guest, who, um, has guided me through my filmmaking process, learning, and he's, uh, taken us to, uh, many competitions. Um, I also would like to thank, uh, Ms. Cook, our avid teacher at Forest High School, for guiding me, um, um, throughout, um, high school. And now, if you would please join me in the pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Christian, we have a, do we have a video to play at this time? Okay, thank you.
The Film Derby is, how I would define it, is it is a real-world film competition. It's such a unique experience because everybody's here for the same reason. And it's all about learning and growing your skill set. The Film Derby offers them the ability to network and meet people who are actually, our mentors all have local businesses. Um, they meet different teachers. They have, uh, meet all the different workshop leaders. So it's an enormous networking opportunity and connector and education for these kids to be able to, um, have the gumption to continue those relationships.
This year, I'm not competing, but I am on the content creation team, which has been such a great experience for me. Um, I have been able to meet new people, use new equipment, um, and really just explore lots of different avenues of filmmaking. I've also met some really incredible people who are industry professionals and been able to learn a lot from them, and hopefully I'll be able to take that back into the classroom.
I've been learning a lot. I've been learning and I've been socializing a lot. I'm a person who is very real with socializing, but always loves learning. And so the workshops have been great just to ask questions and do it hands-on. And just the connections of like-minded people are amazing. I've been getting to know people. I've been showing around my portfolio and viewing others, and it's just been great. A lot of things stuck out to me in the workshop, especially the audio design when I did. The workshop helped me realize you don't have to, you can just add like five at the start. And there was hope a lot, especially when I'm constantly having audio go in and out, changing and blaming different music and sound effects. It works really well at just making it easier, cleaner, and faster especially.
And I think that the Ocala Film Derby gives you all of the tools that you need to go and be successful in the film world. And I've learned so much about like the equipment, um, how teams work in the film world, um, terminology and things like that. So I think that you can really get everything that you need for a successful career here at the Ocala Film Derby.
All right, I want to just take a second. Lori, would you mind coming to the podium for just a second? There's some components of, of this project that many people are not aware of. So would you mind just giving us a, a quick briefing of, you know, what the task of the students was and, and how they accomplished them? And I literally just put her on the spot, so thank you so much, Lori.
No worries. Um, thank you all for having us. Um, we're very pleased to be here, and we're pleased and thank, uh, the school system for all their support through the Film Derby since its inception. And also a huge thanks to the Public Education Foundation, who is our fiscal agent as well. And, um, and of course, we could not do this without, uh, our downtown businesses. Um, and we certainly can't do it. Our budget is getting bigger and bigger every year because of all the great scholarships and equipment and things that we're doing. Um, we did give a total this year of $15,500 in spa, in scholarships to, divided between seven students, so we were super excited about that. Um, so, um, our sponsors, which are too numerous to name here, please go to our website. All the films are now on the website. All the scholarship winners are on our website, ocalafilmderby.org. And, um, I encourage everybody to take a look at that. And please, um, thank everybody that you see that has been a supporter, like when you go into the stores downtown who help us. And when you go in, just tell them thank you. So it's really special for them. Um, so you asked me to tell you how the kids do this? Well, uh, don't ask me, I have no idea. Because, um, what we do is put together, um, I couldn't do this without. I'd love for the, uh, Ocala Film Derby Committee to stand up, please. Anybody, everybody, not everybody can be here today, but those of you who are here, I couldn't do that without this committee. And I do know that we have, I don't know how many mentors we have here, but could you join? I know Dave, you're here. Uh, do we have any other mentors here today? No. So we have to thank our mentors. You have seven mentors that own local businesses here in town. Uh, Dave owns, is part co-owner of Maven Photo and Film. So the kids, what we do is we put together and organize, um, mentors that are on teams with the kids. We also organize workshops that are, people are brought in from all over to do workshops. And we organize guests to come in and do particular workshops or have particular experiences with the kids. And, um, so that's what we do as a group. The teachers, of course, and the mentors are much better versed in the teaching of the kids and the helping of the kids through this. Um, uh, and I can't thank everybody enough for that. So it's a, it's a, becoming a very large endeavor. We were so excited this year. All seven high schools participated in, was it five middle, six middle schools, you guys? Six middle schools, I think? Five, five middle schools. So we pretty much, uh, are having everyone participate at this point, and, uh, we couldn't be happier about it. So thank you all very much, and thank you, thank these guys.
Thank you, Lori. And we do actually have, um, Kathy Oddi here too. She's the coordinator for career and technical, and she's going to talk a little bit about the winning team too, so that they can all get up there and take their picture. So now that you guys have seen the winning, the, um, video and heard from Kelvin and, uh, Lori here, um, we want to recognize some of the students that participated on the winning video team, some of the additional scholarship recipients, as well as recognize, um, the board that put this all together tonight. So from the winning team tonight, we have, from Forest High School, Luis Semide Lozado. From Fort King Middle School, we have Carissa Gouge. From Vanguard High, we have Shania Ferguson. From Lakewood High, Lacy Schenk. From Osceola Middle, Jolzie Wildon. From Westport High, Cheyenne O'Neal. Their mentor, Dave Miller. And their team instructor, Joy Avery. Also here tonight, we have some of the additional scholarship recipients. Um, once again, we have Kelvin Nomar Rivera Cruz. Luis Semide Lozado from Forest also won a scholarship. From Vanguard High, we have Mario Durant. Also from Vanguard High, Rodrigo Eskamia. He has the umbrella. And lastly, I would like to recognize the committee once again. Tonight with us, we have, um, from Bellevue Middle School, Frank Gallagher. From the CEP, we have Erin Conrad. From Forest High, David Guest. From the CTE Department, we have Sean Dingman. From Vanguard High, Marcia Dobinmeyer. We also have Mike Palma from Palma Productions. And last but not least, we have Lori Zink. Without her, this was her brainchild, this was her doing. So without her, none of this would be possible, and we truly appreciate her support.
Just very quickly, uh, one of my favorite things about, um, this event is the collaboration, um, that you show up and you don't know, you may not know the people that are going to be on your team. So that teamwork and collaboration that you're thrown into working with kids from other schools that you've never worked with before. And so I love that aspect of it. I love the work, um, the final product. And so we want to come down, the board wants to come down and celebrate with you. So if you'll hold just a second, we're going to come down and take a picture with you. All right. If your school principal is here too, can they come down and join us?
I like that tie. Uh, yeah, I want to go eat.
Is he in red?
Yeah.
Well, Erin is her niece. Erin used to work at Bellevue, but now she works at CP, and she kind of, she's a big part.
Okay, after that wonderful and inspiring inspiration and pledge, uh, Dr. Brewer, I believe you have a few special recognitions for us.
I do, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Connor. She's going to come back to the podium and give another special recognition, um, at this time.
I sure am, thank you again. Tonight, I also have the privilege of introducing our Marion County Publics High School seniors who have been named semifinalists in the prestigious Seventy-First Annual National Merit Scholarship Award. So each October, high school juniors take the preliminary Scholastic Aptitude, which is our PSAT test. And based on these scores, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation uses a selection index to determine which students qualify as commended students and semifinalists. Less than one percent of high school seniors nationwide even qualify for this program and act, an annual academic competition for recognition and college undergraduate scholarships that started in nineteen fifty-five. Each year, more than 1.3 million students enter the competition with only seventy-five thousand qualifying for recognition and just sixteen thousand reaching the semifinals. This year's Marion County's national semifinalists include Noah Archer from Vanguard High School. Noah is the son of Brian and Christina Archer. He formerly attended Evergreen and South Ocala Elementary Schools and Howard Middle School. He plans to study aerospace engineering at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University under the U.S. Navy JROTC program. Patrick Lukaric from Bellevue High School. Patrick is the son of Renee and Karen Brier Lukaric. Patrick moved to Marion County to attend Bellevue High School and plans to become an astrophysicist and study at California Institute of Technology. Ethan Rubin from Forest High School. Ethan is the son of Randolph Rubin and Donum Lagnus. Formerly attended Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary and Osceola Middle Schools. He plans to pursue an advanced degree in electrical engineering. and Osceola Middle Schools. He plans to pursue an advanced degree in electrical engineering. We also had Gabriela Capobianco from Westport High School, who's now homeschooled. She's unable to join us tonight, as well as Leah McGinley from Forest High School, who is unable to join us tonight. So our students now compete to become finalists for almost 7,000 different scholarships worth nearly $26 million to be awarded in the spring. So stay tuned to hear what's next for these three guys and the two that aren't here tonight. Thank you.
Just wanna say congratulations on your accomplishments so far, but you have some more work ahead of you. So I wanna wish you the best of luck as you go on to your final step. And we'd like to come down and celebrate with you, celebrate your accomplishments. And Ethan, I think you were in my class in fourth grade, so I'm looking forward to that. Okay, we're gonna move on to item 4.1, recognizing donations. We have a $60,000 donation to Shady Hill Elementary School from Marion County Hospital District for a K-5 playground. And I believe we have some members here to celebrate, if you'll come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. The Marion County Hospital District is always thrilled to support your endeavors with Marion County Public Schools. And any opportunity like this that supports children and movement and playing, we are very happy to be involved. So thank you for the partnership. It's a pleasure.
Yes, and we are so grateful for the partnership. And I know Shady Hill is even more excited than maybe the rest of us. Would you mind if we came down to celebrate and mark this moment? Because this is a very large donation, and we are extremely grateful.
Absolutely.
One more. Okay, Dr. Brewer, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of things. First, I'd like to welcome, we've already met Marashia. She joined us in an earlier board meeting this year. But tonight, we have Isaac Smith with us. He's a senior at North Marion High School. He is known for his leadership and commitment to athletics and his academics. He is a president of the school's FCA chapter, a 2025 boys state graduate, and a head coach for Marion County Youth Flag Football. He is also an active member of the varsity football and track teams and a student in the leadership class at North Marion. So welcome. I also wanted to recognize, oh yeah, we can give him a round of applause, and Marashia again. I also, Madam Chair, if you would mind, I'd like to recognize, we, we have seven, we have seven public comment speakers tonight speaking on the topic of Fordham. And I wanted just to make a comment, a little out of order. But the board, in early summer, you all asked me to bring back a recommendation of our plan to address the undercapacity, enrollment, operating costs, and a few other areas for the north end schools. And so what we did at that time was we convened a large group, including our operations team, transportation facilities, our business services team members, our academic team members. And we have done, we have completed a deep analysis of what this plan could look like. And this plan is being presented to the board. It's already been published on Board Docs. But the plan is being presented to you all during the work session this Thursday. I just want the community to know that this, we've never mentioned the word closing an early learning academy. We've, in fact, the board has publicly spoken to actually add more early learning academies. So I, I know that we have public speakers here tonight, and I wanna say thank you for being here. We appreciate your input. And the topic will be presented during the work session this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. So I wanted to share that with you and thank those that are here with us today.
Thank you. Would you like to move forward with consideration of approval of the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 14, 2025, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of items D-25.1, D-25.2, D-25.3, D-25.4, and D-25.5 that have been placed under discussion regular agenda items, and item C-21.1 and C-21.2 that have been pulled and placed under discussion pulled agenda items.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Board, may I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Martinez, would you please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting?
The notice for the October 14, 2025, school board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on October 3, 2025. The proof of publication has been attached in Board Docs under proof of publication.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Young. Item 7.1, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 26, 2025, school board meeting? Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 4, 2025, special school board meeting, early reentry? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 4, 2025, administrative briefing and work session? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 9, 2025, school board meeting? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the September 9, school board meeting minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 9, 2025, special school board meeting?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Good evening, Attorney Powers. Please explain the rules governing persons who wish to address this evening's school board meeting.
Good evening and thank you. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure that the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table on the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting, in the order received by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak to the board, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless that statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a disciplinary matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian can use a student's first or last name, or any identifying references of students or their families are prohibited. Finally, a speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements, Madam Chair. That concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Young, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have 10 speakers.
Okay. Board, it's been traditional for us to give, to allow the full five minutes, so I will assume that we'll move forward under that protocol. Ms. Martinez Young, would you call our first speaker?
Patrick Gilman.
Please state and spell your name, and appear as the timer. You'll have a notice when it gets down to one minute.
Thank you, sir. Patrick Gilman, G.I.L.M.A.N. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and superintendent. My name is Patrick Gilman. I live at 2529 Southeast 19th Circle, CaliFlorida 34471. I thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and I do appreciate your time. To begin, I would like to give you credit for taking on your position with our local school system. I'm sure it's not an easy one. Got a little bit of a comparison to that. A little bit over 40 years ago, my dad sat in your chair. I was a high school student here at Forest High School. I can remember him bringing home many days, a lot of weight on his shoulders, dealing with what you deal with. Not to discount me getting suspended as a high school student here. So I hope you don't have to deal with it, but I appreciate what you do. I'm here this evening to speak concerning Brideway Academy, most recently known as Marion Technical Institute, or MTI. I'm not here to persuade, I'm here to share. I'm in my third year as a staff member of Brideway Academy, and I must tell you, I'm not sure why I'm in, why I'm here and why I'm not your traditional alternative school member. Staff, what I do know is I absolutely believe in the big plan. I started as a middle and high school intensive reading teacher my first year. I was a high school intensive reading teacher my second year, and presently, I'm the behavior specialist here at Brideway Academy. I will absolutely confess that I could not handle being a classroom teacher. I'm sure it is hard everywhere, but it's real hard here. I understand you have and will continue to make decisions affecting our students and staff here at Brideway Academy, and I felt it was important that I share some of my feelings and opinions after having firsthand experience. I will be the first to tell you and anyone else I speak with that this is an alternative school. It is not your traditional school. Our students can be challenging, and when you put them with their fellow, fellow challenging students, it is anything but traditional. With that being said, I have experienced many incredible things here, and I don't mean just bad. I wish I could share many of the conversations I've had with many of our students, what they have gone through, and the struggles that they are dealing with daily. You know, I believe we are all broken in some way, many much more than others, and I want to share that these are not traditional students, although they are still our students. I've spent the majority of my career valuing assets and clearly defining risk versus reward. That's extremely difficult here at Brideway Academy. We have some of the hardest situations here in both students and preparing and preparing them to return to their base schools and ultimately to society, which is the big picture. Therefore, I believe the value here is that our staff needs to be given support and all resources so that they can be the best in working with these students to determine, that you have determined should be at Brideway as opposed to their traditional school. The way I look at it is we at Brideway Academy need to identify, intervene, and as best as possible to correct the issues so these students are not being returned to our traditional schools where the risk really is. Although I have gotten to tell you, the reward is incredible. When one of our students makes that change, it's incredible. Something I've learned here at Brideway Academy, care is not just a word. Here at Brideway, I'm sure, just like all our other schools, although to an interesting degree, when you show one of our students that you care, that you care for them, you care for their today.
Hold on, hold on one moment, just one moment. We need to check our microphone there because we're not hearing it.
Stand back.
Try again.
I get the...
Back up one sentence, we'll, we'll give you.
All right. That you care, you care for them, you care for their today, you care for their tomorrow, their future, which most of them will tell you they truly believe they don't have. These students will do just about anything for you. They eat it up when you show that you care, and they will all of the sudden start accomplishing things everyone thought they couldn't do. I believe we, as staff, your staff at Brideway Academy, will react the same way. I will close with this, we're all too busy. I would like to extend an invitation to all of you to come to spend part of a day, half a day, or even a whole day with me or any of us here at Brideway Academy. Speak to the students and staff and see for yourselves. I know then, your understanding of what happens here will improve, so will Brideway Academy, and our goal of helping every student succeed will accomplish. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gilman, and thank you for caring about the students at Brideway Academy. We appreciate you. Vicky Treulieb.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Treulieb, T.R.E.U.L.I.E.B. Early education is pivotal to a student's academic success. Fordham began with the promise that we needed a place specifically focused on early education, and it's delivered. Ms. Beck has created a culture of academia, but more importantly, a culture of love. At Fordham, the children and staff become families, and they help each other to succeed. My daughter is a success story. Her teachers at Fordham and the administration at Fordham have never given up Her teachers at Fordham and the administration at Fordham have never given up on her, though she certainly has her days. They know her, they know her special tics, they know who she will even get out of the car for in the morning. But they've worked with her to make her into the student she has become. Through their dedication, my daughter's made all As this year and is excelling. If she was at another school, I don't believe it would have been possible. I believe she would be drowning in the curriculum of first grade that she was not ready for. She would have been labeled a problem child and deemed a hopeless cause. But she's not that at Fordham, and that's part of what makes the school so special. Your lack of foresight will potentially destroy a culture that has cultivated our littlest learners and helped build their foundation so that they can be successful for the rest of their academic careers. When Fordham started, there was a lot of work to be done in order to make it successful. The old evergreen lay dormant for years, and Ms. Beck and her team came in and nurtured not only the students, but the entire campus. She created a movement so that every child could learn. Fordham offers education for K-three, it's the only school in the district that does it. Furthermore, it's the only elementary school in the district that offers aftercare for VPK students, which is something that is much needed for working parents. The school continues to set itself apart from other elementary schools, and it has truly become a gem in our community that will only continue to flourish if left alone. To even consider moving this school elsewhere is an asinine idea, especially so that an alternative school could replace it. Perhaps look at other schools that could be better designated for this venture. It's true that we have a population problem in the North End. It's also true that the North Side feels neglected by this district, as we are often the last thought of, or perhaps the first thought of, when it comes to school consolidation. Our buildings are old, but our heritage is strong. There are many ways to utilize these campuses other than your proposals, and the idea of creating three or four K-eight schools for a price tag of sixty-plus million dollars is laughable, especially when we can barely afford the needed repairs now. Adapting these elementary schools would destroy the programs at the middle and high school that create an even greater burden and create an even greater burden on our teachers. But I don't like to come to you with just complaints, so I brought you some other suggestions. One, we could move students from Fesident or Anthony Elementary to Reddick and turn one of those schools into an alternative learning center. We could rezone the entire district so that the population is more equitable at all sites, and also so that it makes sense. Students living by Fordham should not be zoned for Shady Hill. A student zoned for North Mary Middle shouldn't be zoned for Westport High School. We need more common sense in creating these zoning maps. Three, if you want to turn North Mary Middle into an alternative learning center, then create a middle, middle high school on the high school's campus. This allows programs to remain intact and also doesn't require elementary schools to be completely retrofitted to accommodate older and larger students. Four, if you care about the North Side and you want to bring students to these school treasures, consider investing in their magnet programs and providing transportation so that parents have more options available for their students, where they can flourish in smaller environments with some of the best teachers in the district. Lastly, work with the stakeholders at each of these locations, rather than trying to blindside everyone with the ideas that jeopardize the education of our youngest and most impressionable learners. You're sending a message that their education is not as important as the education of students who have already proven that they are not able to function in a mainstream classroom. You're sending the message that the South Side of our county is more important than the North Side. Now is the time to think about our future. Our community deserves better, but most importantly, our students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Treulieb.
Kirsten Angel.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Angel. I live at two zero five five southeast fiftieth terrace in Ocala, Florida. Um, I know that everyone here in this auditorium tonight is very concerned about all the students that are in all of our classrooms, and I know that the people even in the, in, outside the auditorium who are maybe watching on the, on the school board channel are also concerned with the same thing. This should be our most important, per, most important thing that we do at this school system. Therefore, I think it's time that we have an update on the search for the school, the permanent school superintendent. Um, I would urge the school board for us to do a national search, and therefore, I would like to know what the school board's intentions are regarding the National Search Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Angel.
Tia Thompson.
Good evening. Tia Thompson, T.H.O.M.P.S.O.M. Good evening, board members. My name is Tia Thompson, and I'm the proud parent of a first-grade Fordham student and a three-year-old who also attends Fordham Early Learning Academy. I'm here tonight because I strongly oppose the proposed merger of Fordham with Reddick Collier Elementary. Fordham has truly changed my children's lives for the better. When we first started, school mornings were full of tears, it was a daily struggle, but now my children wake up excited to go to school. The teachers, staff, and environment at Fordham have created a place where children want to learn, where they feel safe, loved, and supported. That transformation is something you can't put a number on. I drive thirty minutes each way every single day because I believe Fordham is worth it. Families like mine choose Fordham because of the incredible foundation it gives our kids academically, socially, and emotionally. We go to Fordham because we want to go to Fordham. It's a school of choice, not a school of convenience. People go to Reddick because they're zoned to go to Reddick. We go to Fordham because we believe in what this school stands for and the difference it makes in our children's lives. Fordham is designed specifically for young learners. The staff truly understands early childhood education, and they meet every single child right where they are. They know how to comfort, encourage, and challenge little ones in a way that helps them grow. Every child's need is seen, met, and accommodated, and that's something that's a rare and incredibly value to us parents. Merging Fordham into Reddick would take away that stability and that sense of belonging. Reddick is currently a C-rated school, and while I respect the hard work that's happening there, it's not the right environment for our youngest learners. Moving our children to a struggling school doesn't help them, it risks undoing all the progress they've made. And for families like mine, this proposal creates an impossible situation. If my son has to move to another school, for example, Shady Hill, my three-year-old would have nowhere to go. We would lose that community and that support system that Fordham provides. Fordham is working. It's a success story. Instead of taking it apart, we should be building on its success and investing in programs that are truly making a difference in our children's lives. Please, keep Fordham Early Learning Academy open and intact. Let it continue changing lives the way that it has changed ours. Thank you for your time and listening to the families who trust you with our children's futures.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Krista Fordham.
My name is Krista Fordham. F.O.R.D. as in David, H. as in ham, A.M. ham. My father was Edmund Fordham. No, I don't have little people at Fordham Early Learning Academy, but the passion that I have for the school, my family, and if my father was still alive, runs deep, very deep. The unique qualities that Ms. Beck has implemented with the students, with the staff, with its ability to bring people together, to bring children together, to influence their lives in ways that other schools aren't doing. I am the daughter of a teacher who taught in the Marion County Public School Systems. I am a product of the Marion County School System, and for that, Fordham Early Learning Academy is so valuable to this community. To understand how to take something that's worked so well for four consecutive years and combine it with a failing school, it's unfathomable. And the investment, why can't that investment go to teachers? Teachers in schools where there are children who are having problems, whether they're emotional problems, psychological problems. I'm the mother of a physically impaired child, and one of the things that made him successful was not an alternative school. He does have a degree in clinical social work, so his ability not to walk was the only thing that kept him from being normal, so to speak. Alternative schools don't always help kids. As an entrepreneur, I'm right next door to one. The Marion Academy that's at the Cascades, the Acceleration Academy. I see teenagers go in and out every day, and a lot of them I've interacted with and just asked them, how was their day? Alternative school, do they really want to be there, or were they put there for a reason? To take Fordham Early Learning Academy and combine it with a school that's thirty minutes away from Fordham would be an atrocity. Right now, there are seven babies, my babies, who are in the VPK program. No, I didn't give birth to them, but their mothers either went to school with my daughter or their grandmothers or my classmates. And two of my babies, their mama drives them from Ma- Marion Oaks to Fordham every day. How many schools do they pass? Several, but they wanted to go there because the classrooms are smaller and because of the intimacy that the teachers have with the children and the passion they have for learning. Mrs. Beck and her team and that staff, if you haven't spent a day there, you should go, and you should find out why. Taking the school away and putting it with Reddick Collier is not the answer. It is truly not the answer. There are several other proposals that should be considered, but getting rid of Fordham is not one of them. And by the way, my dad was the first principal of Spar Elementary. If you didn't know it, there used to be a little school in Citra. He spent half his day there and half his day at Spar until Spar was built. I think I was in the third grade. I went to Oakress in nineteen sixty-eight, a monumental year for this county and for the United States. Fordham is important, not just to me. It's not my legacy, it's the legacy of Ms. Thompson. But like Mr. Gilman, I'm a legacy of the Marion County School System as well. Please, consider not doing this to these beautiful children in this wonderful institution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fordham.
Linda Smith.
Linda Smith, S.M.I.T.H. I am speaking on behalf of many Fordham Early Learning families who are deeply concerned about the proposal to move Fordham Elementary to Reddick Elementary. Fordham Early Learning was founded with a clear purpose to focus on the earliest and most critical years of a child's education. By serving pre-K three through second grade, Fordham allows teachers to concentrate on early development without the pressure of testing and the distraction of a large school setting. This focus on nurturing foundational learning is exactly why so many families choose Fordham over other options. As both a parent and a professional in social work, I understand firsthand how vital early education is. I chose to send my children to Fordham, even though my husband works in education at another school, because we value the school's philosophy and the importance of starting early. In my work, I see the long-term effects of missed early interventions and how gaps in development, social skills, and emotional support can follow children for years. Early education is prevention, not just preparation. Research consistently confirms this. According to the National Institute for Early Education Research, children who attend high-quality early education programs are more likely to graduate high school, attend college, and hold stable employment, and are less likely to need special education or repeat a grade. From a social work perspective, I've seen how lack of early support contributes to challenges later in life, including academic struggles, behavioral issues, and involvement in the child welfare system. Early education is often the first line of prevention. The first five years of life are when ninety percent of the brain development occurs, and those early learning experiences directly shape a child's cognitive, social, and emotional growth. Quality early education like what Fordham provides can change a child's life. I also want to point out a very logistical issue this proposal creates. I live on the northeast side of Marion County near Booster Stadium, and Reddick is still twenty to twenty-five minutes away. I, like many other fam- Fordham parents, will not be making that drive. Families who choose Fordham do so for its location, size, and philosophy, not because it's simply the next available school. Moving Fordham will not fill Reddick's classrooms, it will only cause families to return to their own schools and dismantle what has been a successful, beloved, early learning community at Fordham. And I must ask, are we really choosing to dismantle a thriving early education program because it's financially easier for the district? Are we really making decisions based on short-term numbers instead of the long-term impact? Fordham represents an investment in children at the stage of life when that investment matters most. Cutting that short to fix a budget problem is not what's best for our students, our teachers, or our community. Fordham Early Learning is a model of what early childhood education should look like: small, nurturing, family-oriented, and focused on giving young children the strongest possible start. I urge the district to preserve Fordham's mission and location and to continue investing in our youngest learners. Thank you for your time, your service, and your dedication, and I hope you continue to do what's best for our young children, and that's keeping where Fordham is at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Ms. Autumn M.
Hi, Autumn Marget-Jack, M.A.R.G.E.T.J.A.K. Good evening, members of the board, community leaders, educators, and families. My name is Nikki Marget-Jack, and I stand before you not only as a passionate advocate for early childhood education, but as a voice for the countless families, children, and educators whose lives are being shaped day by day inside the walls of Fordham Early Learning Academy. We are not just a- asking you to keep a school open in its current location, we are asking you to preserve a vision, a community, and a commitment to providing our youngest learners with the strongest possible start in life. Fordham Early Learning Academy is not just another school, it is the first of its kind in Marion County, a groundbreaking innovation in early education that has already made a measurable impact. The centralized northern location of Fordham was chosen with purpose, and the data shows why that matters. Since its opening, enrollment in North End VPK programs has increased, bringing more families into early learning who may have otherwise gone without. And the outcomes speak for themselves. Students at Fordham consistently show high performance in literacy and math, scoring on par with and often exceeding results seen in high-performing magnet schools. This is not a coincidence. It is the result of a dedicated staff, a nurturing environment, and a focus on foundational skills that prepare children to walk into kindergarten ready to thrive. But let's talk about what ready actually means. Based on the fall two thousand and twenty-four STAR Early Literacy Data, only thirty-six percent of kindergarten students in Marion County entered school ready, compared to the state average of forty-three percent. That's a serious gap, but we also know that when students attend a Marion County Public Schools VPK program, their readiness increases significantly. Fordham is playing a crucial role in closing this gap, and we're just getting started. This school isn't only about academic preparation, it's about family, community, and connection. Programs like the Stepping Stone Initiative meet families where they are, supporting children from birth to school age with literacy-focused, play-based, and emotionally nurturing care. And let me be clear, this kind of impact cannot be uprooted and replicated somewhere else overnight. Now, there's a proposal to move Fordham students, possibly relocating services to Reddick Collier, thirteen miles farther no- north. That distance may not seem far on paper, but to a working parent with limited transportation, it can be the difference between access and exclusion. Fordham currently serves families from all over the district, not just the immediate area. In fact, only fifty-seven of our two hundred thirty-eight students are zoned for the North End schools. That tells you that families are choosing Fordham not because it's convenient, but because it works. And let's not forget, we are operating in a DCF licensed facility. That comes with unique requirements, retrofitted. That comes with unique requirements: retrofitted restrooms, child-accessible sinks, a safe and sensory-friendly environment, all of which are already in place at Fordham. The idea of replicating this somewhere else isn't just impractical. It's expensive, time-consuming, and disruptive to the students who need consistency the most. Our campus is more than functional, it's inspiring. From the Fordham Forest Nature Trail to sensory-rich playgrounds, a tricycle track, and campus beautification efforts, every inch of this school is designed with young learners in mind. These are not luxuries, they are learning tools, and they are part of what makes Fordham a beacon in early education of Marion County. Lastly, we must honor the history and legacy of Fordham Early Learning Academy. Named after Edmund Fordham, a veteran educator in Ocala, this school is a living tribute to a man who dedicated his life to education and community uplift. Organizations like the Omega Sci-Fi have adopted this school campus to preserve and celebrate that legacy. If we close or move Fordham, we don't just disrupt students, we erase part of our shared community history. Tonight, I ask you, I urge you, do not move our school to Reddick Collier Elementary. Keep Fordham Early Learning Academy open in its current location where it's doing the most good. Thank you.
Melissa Nava.
Melissa Novoa, N.O.V.O.A.
Carly or Jacqueline Johnson, J.O.H.N.S.O.N. Good evening, my name is Carly Johnson, and this is Melissa Novoa. We're not just teachers, we are former Marion County educators who have taught in both low-performing and high-performing schools. And more importantly, we are moms who made the intentional choice to place our kids at Fordham Early Learning Academy. Tonight, we are here to speak not only as educators, but as parents who know firsthand the profound impact this school has on our young learners.
Thank you, Carly. I am Beckett and Amelia's mom, both have attended Fordham Early Learning since it opened. As Carly shared, I have seen students thrive in many different settings. My son is autistic and struggled in the large traditional school environment. He barely spoke and was lost academically and behaviorally, with meltdowns every day at his previous school. When we enrolled him at Fordham Early Learning Academy, he didn't just adjust. Sorry.
Go ahead, it's back again.
It's back, it's back.
He didn't just adjust, he flourished. Today, he speaks confidently, participates actively, and went from a non-verbal four-year-old to being asked to recite the Pledge of Allegiance right here for a school board meeting a few years ago. I can't even comprehend where he'd be if it wasn't for Fordham. He will be graduating this year, and I'm not, but I am here because I want to make sure other children get the same opportunity that he received at Fordham.
As a former teacher, I've noticed a troubling trend in many traditional schools. The primary grades are often overlooked because the focus is on the upper-grade testing. But it's in VPK and kindergarten where students develop the foundational skills that shape their academic and emotional success. My daughter has only been at Fordham for two and a half months, and already she has learned many letters and sounds, early math skills, compound words, reading comprehension, and even emotional regulation. She's thriving in an environment that emphasizes love, attention, and individualized instruction, something far too rare in larger schools.
And it's not just academics. Fordham's approach builds confidence, independence, and social-emotional skills from the earliest years. For my son, the nurturing environment allowed him to grow socially and emotionally while still addressing his specific academic needs. For example, on the first STAR test he took, he was unable to even complete the assessment. This past fall, he scored in the ninety-ninth percentile. Though, there's also my daughter on, who's, I'm sorry, there's also my daughter who's thriving right along with him. We've witnessed firsthand the positive outcomes that come from a small, dedicated staff fully focused on early learners. These results are not just anecdotal. They are support, they support the strong performance metrics and assessments that show Fordham students enter kindergarten ready for success.
The proposal you will hear at the boardwork session on Thursday to relocate Fordham to Reddick Collier Elementary would disrupt all of this. The current site is more centrally located, accessible, and purposely built for early learners. Moving the school would not only place a burden on families and transportation and logistics, but it would also compromise the specialized environment that makes Fordham highly effective. We would lose the child-accessible facilities, the trike track, the Fordham Forest, and the hands-on, play-based learning opportunities that are at the heart of the school's success.
Distance matters. Reddick Collier is over thirteen miles north of Fordham, far for many families. Only fifty-seven of Fordham's two hundred and thirty-eight students are zoned for the northern schools. A move would place undue stress on parents and students and the staff, especially our youngest learners who require safe, licensed facilities for programs like pre-K, pre-K three, and VPK. These are not minor concerns, they directly impact students' well-being, learning, and safety.
Fordham Early Learning Academy is more than just a school, it's a community and a family. It honors the legacy of Edmund Fordham, supports families through programs like Stepping Stone, and fosters a culture where every child feels seen, valued, and respected. The positive outcomes academically, socially, and emotionally speak for themselves. Displacing this school would be a step backward for early education in our county.
We firmly urge the school board to keep Fordham Early Learning Academy at its current site. Our children deserve continuity, stability, and specialized environment that all allow them to thrive. Fordham's success is not just measured by test scores, although they are amazing, but by the confidence, joy, and readiness that instills in every student who walks through its doors. Closing or relocating this school is not just a logistical decision, it's a decision that affects the future of the children in their care.
On behalf of our kids, our families, and the community, we respectfully but firmly ask that you preserve Fordham Early Learning Academy at its current location with no merger. And if you need proof of just how deeply this school touches lives, look around the room tonight. You'll see Fordham teachers and staff, current students, and even families whose children have already graduated, yet they came back because Fordham is more than just a school, it's a family, and it never stopped being a part of their story. That kind of loyalty is not given, it's earned. Before coming here, I sat down with my four-year-old daughter, who is here tonight, and explained that I was speaking to protect her school. Thank you so much, she cried her eyes out. And thank you, and thank you for hearing us.
Thank you both for your message. Natalie Rector.
Hi, I'm Natalie Rector, R-E-C-T-O-R. I'm here to talk about the school utilization proposal that you'll be discussing on Thursday. My child goes to Osceola Middle, so it doesn't actually impact me directly, but I'm a strong believer in the strength of public education and quality education impacts all society, and having a strong public school system is really essential to help everybody. And I've taught in multi-level K to twelve schools for twenty years, and I have some, I read the public presentation that you have posted, and it brought up some questions that I'd like you to consider when you're discussing it. So I appreciate that the plan addresses the financial realities we face and the goal of providing more resources for students, but I'd like to share some questions about it that came up. First, developmental and social concerns. Students in grades six to eight are at a very different developmental stage than children in kindergarten through fifth grade. These early teen years bring new emotional, physical, and social challenges, and students need an environment that supports that growth, not one where they have to share space with very young children. Younger students also deserve a protected, age-appropriate environment. They should not be exposed intentionally or unintentionally to the conversations, behaviors, or maturity levels typical of middle-school students. Placing five-year-olds and fourteen-year-olds in the same building area can lead to bullying, intimidation, or fear, even when staff do their best to prevent it. So the question that relates to that is, how are you going to protect each group of students? Next is academic and instructional impact. K to eight buildings require a wide range of teaching models. Elementary grades are often used one teacher for most subjects while middle grades switch classes. That creates scheduling and staffing challenge that can pull focus away from teaching and learning. Middle school electives, part of the proposal was that money could be saved by sharing resources and staff, but that can create scheduling problems with the different scheduling models. This plan risks diluting both elementary and middle school experiences rather than strengthening either one. So how do you plan to manage the scheduling of the resources and staff? Next is the facilities and logistics. Larger schools mean more congestion in hallways and cafeterias and buses and drop-off and pickup times. It did not explain how it would, the crowding would affect safety or daily schedules and student movement in classes and in hallways and the playgrounds. Younger students will have to share equipment, libraries, playgrounds, and gym spaces with older grades. Even if those facilities are expanded, access will be limited, there's only so much space. How will you address emergency drills and evacuation procedures at school lockdown procedures with more students in one building? Next is belonging and community. Neighborhood elementary schools are often the heart of a community. When we consolidate, we lose that close connection. Parents may feel less involved, and younger children lose the comfort of a familiar, small environment. Students thrive when they feel seen and known. In larger, mixed-age schools, it's easy for kids to feel lost. If counselors and support staff are spread across many age levels, individual attention can suffer, especially for children who need extra help adjusting. So if you're sharing staff across grade levels, there's less time for everybody. So how are you going to address that? How are you going to communicate with parents? In closing, I understand the need to make responsible financial decisions and to modernize our facilities, but I ask that the board take more time to include teachers, parents, and child-development experts in the planning process. Let's make sure that we're not solving a budget problem by creating new developmental, safety, and educational problems down the road. Our children only get one experience to experience elementary, middle school. Let's make sure that that experience is age-appropriate, safe, and designed for their needs. Thank you for your time in considering these questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rector.
Leonard Alberts.
Good evening. Hey, good evening, good to see you. My name is, can you hear me okay? Leonard Alberts, last name Alberts, A.L.B.E.R.T.S. Good evening, members of the board, it's good to see you. Thank you for having me and us from Fordham Early Learning Academy. My name is Leonard Alberts, and I'm the parent of a little girl at Fordham Early Learning Academy, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight on behalf of many families who deeply value what Fordham represents, a stable, nurturing, and developmentally-focused environment for our youngest learners. I understand the district's efforts to find greater efficiency and balance across schools, and I respect that process, but I must ask you to consider the profound impact this move to Reddick would have on the very children these programs are designed to serve. Fordham is already one of the most northernmost schools in the county for this age group, and many of our families live well south of it, myself included. My family lives in Wildwood, nearly forty-five minutes away, yet we make that drive, pick up, and drop off because of what Fordham offers. It is a safe, consistent, and caring environment where children receive the strong early foundation they need for lifelong success. Moving these students away from Fordham would not only present major logistical challenges for families, as other parents have noted and teachers have noted, it would also disrupt the stability and continuity that are essential for early learning and learning and healthy development. My family is certainly not the only ones who feel this way, as you've heard. For young children, consistency and being familiar with their environment are everything. My own child has already been through several transitions. First, when the MTI Teacher Daycare Program closed in two thousand twenty-two here on this very campus, and again, when we were moved to Fordham. Each move required emotional adjustment for my daughter, rebuilding trust, and relearning routines. These changes take a drastic toll. Fordham has finally provided my child with a sense of belonging and stability. The conditions that allow learning, confidence, and social skills are truly take root through programs like these. Uprooting these children again risks setting back the very progress they've made, both academically and emotionally. Early learning isn't just about instruction, it's about the environment. And Fordham's staff, Mrs. Beck, and the structure are uniquely designed for each childhood need. They understand how to nurture curiosity, guide emotional growth, and support developmental milestones. Merging or relocating this program risks losing that focus and could have long-term consequences for how these children grow as learners and as people. I urge you to look beyond the data points and consider the developmental impact on the children themselves. They are thriving because of Fordham's structure, its teachers, and its environment. And disrupting that stability could undo years of progress and something no efficiency plan should outweigh. Please, let our Fordham students remain where they are. Allow them to continue to grow, learn, develop, have fun in the environment that's already working for them, for their minds, their hearts, and their futures. Thank you for your time and for listening to the families who love and believe in the Fordham Early Learning Academy.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you to all of you who showed up this morning to, or this evening, actually, it's not morning, this evening, to share your concerns, we sure do appreciate it. Hope that you'll show up on Thursday when we begin this conversation. Thank you. Board, we're going to move on to informational items and ask that you bear with me. We've got a lot of information to share this evening, and so that will take just a few minutes. Okay, we're moving on to item nine point one, which is an informational item. The Marion County Public School District contracted with A.D. Morgan Corporation to construct a new elementary school in the southwest quarter of the county to address localized overcrowding. While the project was originally scheduled for substantial completion by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, several unforeseen circumstances necessitated a time extension. Specifically, severe weather events caused delays that were beyond the contractor's control as outlined in the standard contract, which identifies such events as excusable delays. Additionally, a mandatory resurvey and retesting of the upgraded signal system by the fire marshal and external authority having jurisdiction further impacted the timeline. The fire marshal operates independently and conducts inspections according to their own schedule and standards. As a result of these factors, substantial completion was achieved on July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. The superintendent or designee has signed and approved the change order, provided that approval shall be, in her judgment, in the best interest of the board. Such change orders shall be binding upon execution. The superintendent or designee shall report such change orders to the board at the board meeting that follows her approval. The approved change order shall be entered into the official minutes of the board meeting. Nine point one, continued amendment number one to the construction management contract guaranteed maximum price for the construction of new elementary school W. Ross Prairie Elementary. Change order number nine, amendment number one, project twenty-four dash one zero one. The Florida Legislature approved a special appropriation to fund an aviation and diesel mechanic program, repair program at Marion Technical College. During construction, the building manufacturer's engineer required a redesign that necessitated the installation of two additional structural columns for additional safety after the building had already been erected. All construction activities were temporarily halted until the columns could be properly installed. The contractor and engineering team worked diligently to expedite the installation and minimize disruption to the overall schedule. However, coordination with the fire marshal and independent authority having jurisdiction was delayed due to limited availability, impacting the timeline for final inspection and approval. While the contractor was able to absorb most of the delay with the original schedule, an additional seven calendar days are required to account for the unforeseen circumstances. Substantial completion was achieved on August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The superintendent or designee has signed and approved the change order, provided that approval shall be, in her judgment, in the best interest of the board. Such change orders shall be binding upon execution. The superintendent or designee shall report such change orders to the board at the meeting that follows her approval. that follows her approval. The approval change order shall be entered in the official minutes of the board meeting. Item 9.2, Construction of a New Aviation and Diesel Auto Mechanic Program Building at Marion Technical College. Change Order Number Three, Work Authorization Number Thirteen, Project 24-110. The school district used a construction management delivery method, including a guaranteed maximum price, to perform construction work on this project. There were unused funds on the project. Since the project was delivered using a construction management delivery with a GMP format, unused dollars, regardless of the item, are returned to the owner. The unspent monies will be returned to the owner via change order. With those, the financial books on this project. The superintendent or designee has signed and approved the change order, per Board Policy 6345. The superintendent or designee is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract by $25,000 or less, or that will decrease the construction contract amount, provided that approval shall be, in her judgment, in the best interest of the board. Such change orders shall be binding upon execution by the superintendent or designee. The superintendent or designee shall report each change order that she approved to the board at the board meeting that follows her approval. The superintendent or designee's approval of the change order shall be entered into the official minutes of the board meeting. Item 9.3, District-wide High School Football Stadium Lighting Replacement, Change Order Number Two, Work Authorization Number Five, Project 24-113. Item 10.1, Board, may I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items C11.1 through C22.5, with the exception of Items D25.1, D25.2, D25.3, D25.4, and D25.5 that have been placed under Discussion Regular Agenda Items, and Items C21.1 and C21.2 that have been pulled and placed under Discussion Pulled Agenda Items. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Board, we're moving on to Student Disciplinary Matters. Before addressing Expulsion Matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the Alternative Placement List for students through September 11, 2025. Ms. Martinez-John, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. 26-011 with off-campus virtual learning for the remainder of the 2025-2026 school year and the first quarter of the 2026-2027 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. 26-007, J.D. 26-010, J.D. 26-012E, J.D. 26-013, J.D. 26-015, J.D. 26-016E, J.D. 26-018 for the remainder of the 2025-2026 school year and the first quarter of the 2026-2027 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Moving on to Discussion Regular Agenda Items. Item D25.1, May I have a motion to approve the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Marion Education Association and the School Board of Marion County, 2025 through 2029? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. Brewer, you have some information that you'd like to share with us regarding this item?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'd like to ask Ms. Morant, our Executive Director of our Human Resources, to come provide remarks, and she will be happy to share about the process, and we're happy to be here tonight.
Definitely. Thank you and good evening, Dr. Brewer, Chair Conrad, and board members. On behalf of the Human Resources Department, Attorney Blackman, and the Marion Education Association, I am requesting board approval for the 2025-26 changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the Marion Education Association and the School Board of Marion County. The changes to the three-year agreement are notated in the document attached to Board Docs. The members of the bargaining unit ratified the tentative agreement by a vote conducted by the Marion Education Association. The total cost associated with this item is $5.8 million, which includes approximately $4.2 million for years of service increases and $1.6 million for pay-for-performance increases. Once again, I want to extend my sincere appreciation to Mr. Mark Avery, the MEA members, the district bargaining team, and everyone involved in ensuring that we were able to settle on the MEA collective bargaining agreement. Thank you, and with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Brewer, for any additional questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Morant.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Morant. Board, any discussion or any questions at this time? Oh, yes, Ms. Thrower.
I'll just say, probably on behalf of the whole rest of the board, that it's just really great to be in the position to vote on this tonight.
I concur, and I want to add a thank you, Ms. Morant, to you and Attorney Blackman. Really, thank you for spearheading this and getting us moving in the right direction. So thank you both and your team for getting this ready in October.
Here we are.
All right. Thank you both so much.
Not next year.
Yes, yes, not next year. All right, Board, if there's no other discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Thank you, Ms. Morant. Item D25.2, May I have a motion to approve the Compensation Amendment Number Four to the Construction Manager Contract Guaranteed Maximum Price for Buildings 1 through 4, Remaining Interior Finishes, Buildings 6 through 10, and Courtyards and Sport Field Related to Construction of New High School CCC, now known as South Marion High School, Project 24-105. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Chair, I'll be recusing myself from this vote.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. Brewer, you have some information on this item?
Yes, and we will continue to pull any items with the new high school for discussion just to keep the community abreast of what is happening with this big project, because it is such a big project. And we do have Ms. Boombach here this evening, our Director of Facilities, to provide brief remarks.
Good evening, Ms. Boombach.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Brewer. I've been here a couple times with several GMP, with several guaranteed maximum price proposals, and this is the last one. This is the number four, and it's just over $13 million. It is in the guaranteed maximum price, number three. You already saw a few items were excluded in there, waiting for this number four coming out. So it will finish out the project. It's mostly interior finishes, and I've listed acoustical ceilings, wall panels, the flooring, specialty items, landscaping, irrigation, and of course, the artificial playfield in the football stadium. The schedule follows the overall schedule, and the substantial completion is before October 29, but we already know that the main building and the cafeteria building will be open for school to start in August.
Thank you, Ms. Boombach. Dr. Brewer, anything you would like to add?
Nothing new.
Okay.
That last statement, she said that the building will be open for classes in August, and this last October 29 will be the additional property that won't impact the first day of school for students.
Thank you, Board. I open it up for discussion or questions?
Just a brief question for further conversation. It's not timely now, but as we've had lots of discussion about athletics as a board of late, if we could at some point understand the implications for fall athletics, if there is an intention of having fall athletics at South Marion next fall, and then would they then, where would they play football? Or if there's not an intention for them to have a football team, that's, just understanding all of that for fall sports, seeing as the way I believe this to be read is that we won't have a completed athletic field, and potentially those are going to be the pieces that are completed last. So at some point, maybe if Mr. Tucker or someone could update the board, or at least me, on those pieces, that'd be wonderful.
Can you share any information now, Ms. Boombach, or we can bring that back to the board?
So all the fields should be ready for the first day of school, and we are working with Mr. Tucker really closely and the principal to have all the programs up and running in time.
So what then is the component of the substantial completion?
Auditorium. It's just the funding to put the turf field in and the interior finishes. We just had to wait until the funding was approved by the board for the remaining $13
Okay, it just reads the substantial completion is October 29. So is the turf field going to be done before school starts?
Yes, so October 29 was the, we brought a time extension to your approval a while ago, but that was only for the auditorium building.
Okay, thank you for that point of clarification.
Thank you very much. Anything else further from the board? All right, Ms. Boombach, thank you so much for your presentation. Board, we'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes three.
Zero.
Zero with one recusal. All right, thank you, Board. All right, moving on to Item D25.3, May I have a motion to utilize the Florida Department of Education Bid ITB 2023-02 for the purchase of five new school buses with lifts? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, and thank you, Ms. Thrower. Dr. Brewer, you have some information on this item for us.
Yes, thank you. I'll allow Ms. Rose Stannich, our Supervisor of Transportation, to provide brief remarks on this purchase.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Good evening. These five buses are lift buses, and they are to, go back to what we talked about of trying to catch our fleet up to where we buy 10% a year. Greatly appreciate the board entertaining that, and then you'll see the next that moves on with these five lift buses, and then 13 regular 77-passenger buses will become, I believe, in the next item.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, any discussion on that item? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Item 25.4, May I have a motion to approve to utilize the Florida Department of Education Bid ITB 2023-02 for the purchase of 13 new school buses? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Is there any further discussion on this item? Oh, yes.
Just the costs. I know we try to articulate those when these are under discussion, because it's a pretty big ticket item, right?
Yes.
$2.2 million.
Ms. Rose Stannich, do you have that dollar amount?
$2.2 million.
$2.2 million.
The total for, that was approved for bus purchases, bus purchases was $3 million, and I believe we went 60,000 or 80,000, $3,080,000. The extra 80,000 that was on there went so we could purchase an additional bus because of the way the numbers kind of configured there, you know, to add, to add up when you do the lift buses, which are little, they're gas buses, and then you have the 13 77-passenger regular buses, those are diesel buses. So that's where you see kind of the difference in pricing on those.
Great, thank you. I just think it's important to make sure that that's articulated, and the lift buses, of course, will accommodate lifting wheelchair, and so we can transport our students with special needs, correct?
Yes, ma'am. The five that we have on there, those, the lift buses, those are for being able to pick up the wheelchairs and then they have the extra space in the back where there's no seats because they have to be secured in the bus.
Thank you. Just appreciate the extra information, especially the cost.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Anything else? Yes, Dr. James?
I just wanted to say thank you to the fellow board members and our staff who have advocated for some of the things we've prioritized as a board, and we heard the message loud and clear, and the board has made a commitment, at least for this year, to start a prioritization, not just for transportation, but also for athletics. And that is something that is unique to, I think, the work this board has done, and it's not something that we've seen historically. There's so many needs across the district, and so finding a hierarchy and priority can be challenging, but I do believe that the picture is very clear that we have to continue to revitalize and refresh our transportation fleet, because we do provide transportation for, what is it, more than 50%, 50% of our student body?
22,000 students. Well, we have 23,000 that are considered riders, but we transport between 21,000 and 22,000 a day.
Yes, and so it's a significant amount of students, and we, having reliable transportation to make that happen is super important. And I do stress to the community, we, the implications for an accident that is not our fault is significant. We can have someone just do a fender bender and run into one of our buses, and if you want to speak to, how long is that bus off the road? How long is that driver off the road?
That particular, well, the bus itself that you're, in the incident you're talking about, we had to quarantine that bus. Luckily, this time, since we were not at fault, and the, it seems that the accident happening was kind of pushed into our bus, did cause damage to our bus, but I did just get word today that we were able to start repairing that bus at this point, which is unusual because we've had buses in the past that have been quarantined for multiple years as we wait for things to work out as far as within, you know, the law and those kind of things.
And the bus driver has to be out for at least three days, right, for the drug test?
Yes, ma'am. Part of the CDL process in an incident, an accident like that, it's mandatory to be drug tested and go through those channels, and when that happens, we usually lose three days on kind of the minimum.
Correct, and so some of those buses that may be quarantined for a significant period of time, some of them we're still paying for on a loan, so theoretically, we're paying for a bus that can't even be used. And so I just stress to the community the importance of being aware and being cautious of the driving patterns of our buses and just trying to be extra cautious around the buses, because the implications are significant. And then, you know, incidents like last week, which I was going to mention in comments, but I'll just mention it now because you're here and I want to make sure you hear, I mean, the lift that transportation had to lift to make Fesden students arrive at North Marion Middle on Friday and then be promptly transported to, back to Fesden by 8:30 or 9:00 a.m. was significant, and it is though it occurred without anyone doing anything out of the ordinary. It was like everyone just stepped up to make things happen for students to get to arrival. And now, was our attendance amazing on Friday? No, it could have been better at Fesden because we obviously had an interruption in service, but what I know is that transportation immediately was a well-oiled machine. I don't, no pun intended there, but they were a well-oiled machine to get buses where they needed to be, to make sure students where they were, and then we had a plan operationally of making sure adults were back at Fesden's campus before the buses arrived, and I just want to give you accolades since you're here right now, and you may not be here later for comments, on the work that you all did to make that happen. And I think today, we got the transportation report, you guys have some of the best on-time arrival I've seen since I've been a board member, and there's still hiccups. I don't want to dismiss the fact that there are still areas in the community that are struggling with on-time arrivals, but you all have done a tremendous job of improving on-time arrivals in the last two or three years, and there's, I want to make sure that you have that recognition.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, with that, we'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Item 25.5, May I have a motion to approve the increased funding for renewal of the Piggyback Agreement with School District Services Incorporated, Polk County School Bid Number ITB 049 MJ 0624 for school bus transportation? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the Piggyback Agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Dr. Brewer, you have some information regarding this item?
Yes, I'd like Mr. Whitehouse to come to the podium to explain the rationale for this renewal for the Piggyback Agreement and to share with you the reason and the students that this will impact.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer, good evening, Board. So there's two things that we're trying to accomplish here with renewing the Piggyback Agreement and extending the amount of money that we're interested in expending with, schools or... District Services. One is we're attempting to provide some creative transportation solutions for, for some of our more struggling schools with, that schools that have additional funding sources through Unisig dollars that we can then accommodate some of those transportation needs for those students. The second thing that we're working with them on is we know that we have struggles sometimes with filling all of our bus routes with capable drivers. School District Services does have the option for us to be able to utilize just their drivers as needed, and so Mr. Ostenik is working with them to vet their drivers and determine if we can pull some of those in when we have a number of drivers out on a given day that we could then tap into their drivers, not have to double up on routes, and thus increase some of our on-time arrivals when we would typically not be able to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. Any discussion, questions? Yes, Ms. Thrower.
Thank you. I love everything about this proposal because it's proactive, and I'm really excited to finally see Wyamina Park Elementary School's needs being addressed, and that came from a completely, from an attendance response committee meeting at a completely different school. But it, it's that level of collaboration and the granularity of how do we meet students' needs now so that we're not having to pay for a lot of expensive intervention later that we all know, you know, the research is there, i- if you get it right the first time, they're going to do better. So I'm really grateful for, for this opportunity. I continue to be really worried about the number of absences that we have on a daily basis of drivers in Marion County Public Schools. I don't know that there's anyone even sitting here in this whole room that would raise their hand and volunteer to be a bus driver. It is a tough job, but our drivers, I'd put them up against anybody, you know, they build relationships with the kids and, and they do a great job. So whatever we can do to increase our pool of drivers, whatever we can do to find alternative sources of transportation, like the vans that we bought where you don't have to have a full CDL, whatever we can do to make sure that we are continuing to jump by 10% a year, we're over almost 93% on-time arrival right now, which is a 10% increase from last year. So we're definitely heading in the right direction, but when it's the same routes that are affected every day, and those kids are missing that critical core instruction first period, it, we still have a major problem because that one kid could be the one that gets us into an aid district. You know, it, it's such a razor-thin margin, you know, when it comes to school grade that, you know, every single child needs the level playing field and opportunity to get their instructions. So keep going with proposals like this because I'm going to vote yes every time.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Anything else?
Per.
Okay. With that, we'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four, zero. Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. Boards, we're going to move on to discussion, pulled agenda items. Item D 26.1, may I have a motion to approve the amendment to the Central Office Staffing Plan for the 2025-2026 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. James, you pulled this item for discussion.
Thank you, and I really wanted to pull it for awareness more than anything else. Not even just maybe a month ago or more, we finalized our budget as a board, and, and part of getting to a, a balanced budget was a pretty in-depth, multi-part conversation about not just our school-based ratios, but also our central office staffing plan. And a big part of that conversation was the additions throughout the year to the central office staffing plan that occur, and so this being, I believe, the first addition to make it to a board meeting, I felt it was important that it get moved to discussion so that we had the appropriate discourse and time to really air the funding for these positions and to truly understand how we got here. I'll add as a side note, I think it would be a very good addition for maybe in the information-only portion of our meetings to share the positions we're adding to school-based, school-based positions we're adding. Those never come before the board, it's an operational decision that occurs outside of a board meeting, but it would highlight that we are also adding positions to schools on a regular basis, not just the central office, because it does very much appear, because that's what comes to the board, that the only thing we're adding to is the central office staffing plan. So that's just a kind of aside and something that's come to my head as I was thinking through this tonight. Certainly, I, I will share this information, but I did get it from Ms. Morant and Ms., Mr. Whitehouse. The, we are adding positions to two different departments with the central office staffing plan, and the funding sources for these, the first comes from Florida Blue, and it is essentially a annual position where the funding source would come from Florida Blue. And then the second position, the IT position, is to hire something that Power School is currently doing in-house so that next year, we would not need to pay Power School the essentially $250,000 to do the job, and instead, we would take that with fringe and pay the internal employees. So there is no added cost to the district to add these two positions, but I felt it was important that we highlight that to the public because that didn't seem very aware to me as I was reviewing the board docs, and I wanted to make sure that it was clear to the public that we're at this point not adding any additional positions to manage central office work, and wanted to make that point of clarification.
Thank you, Dr. James. Anything else from the board? I did have, have one suggestion. I don't know if this would need to be put in executive contact, but I would, I would like these positions that we add or come before us to add for there to be like a running list, because when we got to budgeting and positions, there was a big surprise at the end of the year. And so I would just like, as we, each board meeting, I see a lot of our staff nodding, so thank you very much for that, but then there's no surprise at the end of the year when we begin to budget for our next round, we'll know who's been hired, what we've added, and where it came from.
The funding source.
Yes.
Yeah, indicating the funding source would be helpful. I definitely agree with that.
Okay, any further comment? Okay, with that, board, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four, zero. Discussion, regular agenda item, item D 26.2, may I have a motion to approve the new job description for data analysis 2.43?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. James, you also pulled this item to have further discussion.
Yes, thank you. Seeing as this is attached to the previous item, I wanted to highlight this, and I'm not, I, I barely know how to work most of the Microsoft platform, so that's about all I can manage. So understanding the complexity of a position like this is not lost on me. I do, I wanted to highlight, and something that I thought could be an area of improvement in the future, the pay, the salary schedule here is pretty significant, and I think it's reflective of the unique skills and abilities that come with a position like this. However, Ms. Morant and I in conversation, one of the things that we discussed was that we have gotten to a standard that an AA degree or certification similar has been an expectation, not just a preference, and in this specific position, a bachelor's degree is the preferred, but this, the, essentially, the requirement is a high school diploma. And so the pay that is attached to this, I do think it would have been more appropriate for it to have at least some level of technical certification or degree as a requirement attached to it, but I'm certainly not going to vote no tonight on the item unless there's consensus to make that adjustment, obviously, as a board right now, and maybe we could make that. But that is just something in the future I would like to see us work towards. I know that that is something we're trying to do as we improve in JDs, and so that's something I wish we could have captured here.
Right, thank you, Dr. James. Yes, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. Thank you for highlighting that, Dr. James. I do appreciate the sentiment of we're an educational institution, so about putting a high value on higher education is, is important. However, the proficiency in the various computer skill languages here would speak to certifications that aren't necessarily written here, but in order to be proficient in many of those, there most likely are certifications. Perhaps when we do have these unique specialized skills like that in the future, we can require some kind of certificate of sorts to be included in lieu of additional higher education. So I completely respect it. I do believe that anyone with the proficiencies there have those certificates, we're just not asking for them to produce them, but certainly appreciate the conversation. I don't know that it's necessary for us to alter anything at this point to approve it, but just as we look at these in the future, I'm looking at Mr. Ben Menudie specifically, shaking his head. So, yeah, no, certainly appreciate the conversation. It is a unique skill set on, on some of these fronts, and definitely, we need to be pay them, paying them what market rates are paying them. So we have to do that in order to get what we need, so, okay.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, and I concur with my fellow board members. I think a lot of these are certifications, and so maybe in the future, we can add that to the job description. So, yes, Ms. Thrower.
Yeah, and just also too, sometimes it's on the job experience, you know, if there's a proven track record of working for, you know, five years with ex-big tech company successfully, that's something to keep in mind as well. I guess it's important to me to make sure that we capture education and/or experience, and if you've got proof, then I'll take it.
Right, thank you, Ms. Thrower. Board, with that, we'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four, zero. Thank you. We'll now move on to meeting reminders. There will be a special school board meeting scheduled for October 16th at 7:00 AM. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for October 16th, 2025, at 9:00 AM. There's another special school board meeting scheduled for October 28th, 2025, at 7:00 AM. A school board meeting is scheduled for October 28th, 2025, at 5:30 PM. There is an additional administrative briefing and work session on October 30th, 2025, at 9:00 AM. And with that, we will move on to board comments. Ms. Martinez, young.
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Attorney Powers.
Nothing from legal, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Brewer.
Yes, thank you. I, I don't often get to brag or say thank you to our own staff, but I, I want to recognize them because Dr. James commented earlier, but the, early in this week, might have been Monday.
Friday.
Friday, Friday of last week, we, we needed, there was a, the road was closed, and as many know, we had to redirect all of our students and staff to North Marion Middle School from Fesden Elementary, and I contacted our executive team at 5:30 in the morning, and they were all on a Zoom, ready to go, creating a plan of action so we could make this happen, and that just, it speaks volumes to the dedication and the commitment that the team has to ensure that the students were in a good place for learning that day. So I just want to say thank you to them because they are just an incredible team. And in addition, Safe Schools, I want to comment on them, they were able on, as the community also was aware, we were, we had a little bit of a scare that there was a convicted child murderer that moved into a neighborhood behind Sunrise Elementary this week, and our Safe Schools Department, within minutes of finding the information, immediately connected with Marion County Sheriff's Office and started developing a plan. Fortunately, we now know that individual has been extradited and back in Kentucky, and things are good, but just, it takes extra diligence to the work every day, and sometimes the community doesn't get to see the work that goes on behind the scenes. And last but not least, the excitement of getting two bus routes for Wyamina Park to transport 84 students is really a game changer, and we are able to do that because of using funds such as the Unisig dollars and that Piggyback Contract that the board approved tonight. So we're appreciative, and we look forward to that attendance continuing to arise, but I was there that morning and seeing the students so excited to get on the school bus, and their parents were appreciative, so we're looking forward to great things there. I have a couple just announcements for you. This week is National School Lunch Week, so schools across the state are tasting the world, and so they're trying different cuisines and exploring different cultures. So if you're at a school this week, go ahead and stop by the cafeteria and see what the students are eating. Next week, and this goes right along with your comments tonight about our school transportation, next week, we will celebrate National School Bus Safety Week. So we will have different social media posts to remind parents to talk to their children about safety tips, getting on the bus, getting off the bus, and of course, staying at the bus stop. I want to remind everyone that October 16th is our work session, but the two topics that we will provide the board information on will be the North Side Utilization and Goal Four, which is fiscal and operational efficiency, and then Goal Five, well, on November 6th, we'll have, we're bringing back the topic that was requested by the board on the Reddick Call Your Athletic Use, and we're providing a presentation on the Facilities Rental Agreement Procedures, and then on November 20th, we are bringing to you the Gifted Learning Part Two, which was requested by the board, and Goal Five, which is the Community Engagement and Communications Plan. And that's all of my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. We're going to lean in to our board representatives, and so we will start with Mr. Smith.
Good evening, and thank you, Chair and Board. I would just like to thank you all for allowing me to be on the board and to represent the North Side. I would like to share a few things that we have had going on at North Marion. We just had our homecoming game and homecoming dance, which was a huge success. I play on the football team, so it was fun to have one last homecoming. We have recently added a new courtyard for our school, which has been kind of fun because it's been a hotspot for some new activities. We also have a cer, or not a ceremony, but a red ribbon event coming up in the next few weeks, which is, its main focus is to prevent drug use in kids. So I just want to thank you all again, and I've really enjoyed, you know, learning and hope to learn a lot more things, you know, in these next few meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate you giving of your time this evening because we know that you both are extremely busy, and with that, we'll turn it over and LaFontaine, Ms. LaFontaine, is that close? Okay.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Board, for having me here today. I just wanted to mention that I really appreciated the Ocala Film Derby being here today, and there was something that someone said that kind of stuck with me. They, it was a student who said that they loved being around like-minded people, and I relate to that because I'm a part of Key Club. I've been in Key Club since freshman year, and I think there's just an extracurricular for everyone, and I think extracurriculars are really important because it helps students connect and meet other people. I've met so many different people from all across the state of Florida, I've made friends, so I think programs like that are really good, and I just am so grateful to be here because it's so interesting to be on the other side of things and see how the school board handles things, so thank you.
Yes, and thank you for being here with us this evening. We sure do greatly appreciate it. And with that, we'll move on, Ms. Thrower.
Thank you. Yes, other than that, not much going on, right? I'm looking forward to the conversation on Thursday morning, as I'm sure the rest of us are, regarding the North End utilization and the successes that we see up in that area and the challenges maintaining those successes create with the reality of, of our budget and, and space utilization, which is getting to the point where it's not just the Marion County School Board that has say over how our schools are being used if there's space available. So it's, it's new territory for us to navigate, but I hope that the speakers that were here tonight, all of them, and that were so supportive of Fordham and, and the model and the innovation and the success, know that none of these decisions are going to come lightly. It's my comment time, so I'll just keep it personal, definitely not going to come lightly from, from me. It doesn't even matter, you know, whose district Fordham is in. We know it's been a gift to this community and a, and a gift to the parents and a gift to the children, so how we navigate that moving forward will be worthy of conversation on, on Thursday. I agree 100% with the Film Derby, and this is kind of a cute story because, you know, my husband has learned that education is a time commitment for me, and, you know, to go down on a Saturday afternoon, was it Saturday or Sunday?
Sunday afternoon.
Yep, Sunday afternoon, but he's like, yeah, you know, sure, I'll go with you, and he really enjoyed it. It, it was just so creative and so neat to see kids in their, in their element, you know? Plus, we got to have lunch at Mala Mushroom, so we support our local business. So there's just so many tremendously exciting things going on in Marion County Public School I, schools. I also wanted to give a shout out, there were six Rookie of the Year teachers that are all representing some form of career in technical education, and to me, that just goes to show you how we have evolved and recaptured vocational, you know, what it used to be called, and, and what career in technical education can really do for kids and, and reduce financial burdens and help them have a, a good career opportunity right out of high school, and then what they choose to do with it. And then what they choose to do with that moving forward will be their call in their life to live. But there's so many opportunities within our school system. We heard a lot about scholarships tonight that were being earned through the Film Derby and just the connections that are made. It's so important for kids to feel like when they come to school that there's a reason for them to be here. There's a reason for them to be here every day, on time, ready to learn because we've got something for you. And I just see that momentum continuing to take hold and I'm sure Dr. Campbell is going to update us on some legislative things and some priorities that I think Marion County is being heard. And that's very, very exciting. That's been the culmination of years of building bridges with our state legislature, who makes a lot of decisions on our behalf. And if you don't have a seat at the table and they're not interested in your conversations, then we're not going to be able to serve our students as well. So I'm really proud for the way this board has evolved over the years. Instead of just going up there during Legislative Week and shaking hands and on to the next group, we go up during Committee Week. So we can, and we meet also, we've already met with all of our legislators, one-on-one to talk about the opportunities and issues and barriers and potential solutions that we have to better serve you. And that's what it's all about. So it's an exciting time to be a school board member and there's, within all the challenges, I know we're going to continue to make great progress. Those are my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thrower. Dr. James?
Thank you. I will be brief. I got to thank Mr. Ostanik already. I'm glad I did because I knew he was probably going to leave. But the work that, the lift that they did on, the lift that they did last Friday was significant and real proper acknowledgement going to them is important. I have to say, it's, it was eye-opening to see how consistent our messaging is because in my home, obviously, we were navigating our morning so that I could, I wanted to be able to go to North Marion to support them. And my husband's remark was, man, their attendance is really going to be hit today with, and he understood, he's like, man, attendance is just going to be hit today with Pheasant because they're, they're not, the kids aren't going to make it to school. And I thought, wow, he must really listen because it is something we talk about all of the time within Marion County Public Schools. And so I thought it was just kind of neat that, you know, without any prompting, that was his thought pattern on it. I wanted to give a shout out to the North Marion High School Courtyard. I love that you gave recognition there. I'm glad that we were able to make that happen for North Marion and follow through with those contractors and really make something beautiful come from what was a pretty big eyesore for most of the school year last year. So thank you for that recognition. I think it was a good work and we did a good job holding accountability there. We had public comment today about the superintendent search, so I wanted to make sure we mentioned that. The October 2nd work session was where the firm came and presented to us and we are in the middle of the superintendent search. So the intention, I believe, is December 1st, the board will receive feedback from all of the surveys and the committee meetings. I do want to mention, maybe Dr. Brewer or Mr. Christian, could we possibly create a landing page where the document from HYA lives so that people who are in the community and have questions would be able to find it soon? You certainly don't have to answer right now, but I just thought potentially we would be able to get a landing page. And obviously, the document that HYA presented, we adjusted a little bit with timelines and we made some slight schedule changes. So maybe if we could get an updated timeline and make it available online, so community members who are looking to know where we are in the process would be able to find that information timely. I am continuing school visits. I always love to visit schools. I'm looking forward to the community conversation about the North End and the utilization. As a board member, I think that hearing perspectives is so important because we represent the community we serve and that is ultimately why we landed here, because the voters chose to put us in these seats. And so having that community input is very important. One of the things that I've learned as a board member is that there is so many nuances that go into the decisions that we make up here. And when you're a school leader, your school is the most important thing in your vision because it is your school and it is the thing that you are most focused on. And as you move into district leadership and then sit ultimately up here, we have to, we have an obligation to look at the entire system, which doesn't always make every single person feel amazing. And that is unfortunate. I wish there was a way we could make it all work perfectly. But we do have to have real conversations about finances and utilization and the realities of charters coming into our campuses that are being underutilized. And so those continued conversations, I'm looking forward to that. I'm thankful for Dr. Brewer bringing that forward. And I think that the board will have some constructive conversation and some real conversation later this weekend. It may require a part two and we'll get to hopefully a landing spot so that we can give community members an understanding of what happens next. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. James. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. Just a couple of things this evening. First of all, Chair, when you were listing off the meeting notices, just, I believe the script indicated that we were having a work session on October 30th and it's actually on October 31st. So just for the notation, I did see that the script said the 30th, but our policy day that we're going to be spending for a long, long time, I've gotten the notebook, guys, so just know that I'm going to be doing. So if you wanted a notebook, they'll do it for you. So I have the big one in my car I have to start working on. So that'll be October 31st, even though policy's not scary, it is Halloween at 9:00 a.m. So I also wanted to reference the perfect audits that we approved tonight, the consent agenda. Almost all of the internal audits that we approved this evening were perfect. Alternative Learning only had, I think, one or two checks and that account has since been closed and that was under the direction of Mr. Dwan Thomas. He has exciting news happening in his life, not exciting for us because we'll be leaving or he'll be leaving the school system and towards the end of the year, but grateful for all the work he's done for us. Also, perfect audits with Anthony Elementary, Bellevue Elementary, Bellevue Middle, Donnellan Elementary, 8th Street Elementary, and then our McKinney Vento program. So all of those were perfect audits. And you know, I always like to give shout outs to those folks who are doing that hard work and making sure that they are balancing and all of their internal accounts are accurate. Ms. Thrower referenced the FSBA. Last week, as you guys know, I was there, so thank you for rescheduling our work session times whenever from what we originally had. Was there for four days, working on a lot of things, but Friday, we did work on legislative priorities. I had already texted you guys this because it's not something we're going to vote on other than we've already voted on our legislative platform. But I'm grateful to say of the seven to eight items that FSBA will have on their platform this year, all of Marion County's priorities are basically there in some shape, form, or fashion. And so we led that charge. I mean, that's really something that I am crediting us with understanding. Attendance will be a huge focus. Transportation funding will be a huge focus. Exceptional Student Education funding will be a huge focus. While we're focusing on gifted education and we do have a legislator who's very interested in potentially working on that language with us, just working on ESE funding alone, if it stays in the statute, if gifted stays in the statute, it will still help gifted. So we'll be working on what that looks like, that to be continued. Safe Schools funding is a big priority, as is VPK and kindergarten readiness. Those are our top five and we're going to figure out how that's going to work specifically in FSBA's platform as they massage the language and all. But I was just really grateful to know that when we were voting on the items we thought were top and as we were voting, it was like, okay, I think, well, there's going to be a couple of other items that weren't on our platform, as I said, seven to eight items, but we definitely led the charge there. So kudos, team, we're rocking it. I do want to address just briefly the comments that were made this evening. And I know that we'll have a much broader conversation on Thursday, but because this is a public meeting that was publicly noticed and we had so much public comment tonight, I wanted to just share with you, I had my briefing this morning. So I think most all of you had already had yours because I was out of town. But I had my briefing this morning and Ms. Thrower made a reference to something that other districts are experiencing that we haven't yet experienced. But while I was with multiple districts, 20 or 30 districts last week, they were getting letters in their home districts from multiple charter school operators that now have the ability to come in under the Schools of Hope legislation that allows them to try to co-locate in underutilized public schools with the public school is responsible for the maintenance and the facilities construct, all the things that go on and the charter school can come and co-locate in an existing public school. And at least 13 or 14 districts received letters last week. Letters were preemptive. Charter schools can't even actually apply or even send those letters until November 11th regardless. I say all of that to say, the conversation we're having on Thursday is incredibly timely because we have to get very serious about what that looks like. Now, did we get a letter from a charter school company? No. We have very limited charter schools in Marion County right now. But if we don't get serious about getting our house in order and taking care of what we own and how we manage the locations we do have, someone else might try to come in on our dime to operate in one of our facilities. So with all of that to be said, I completely respect all of the folks that came and talked so vehemently about Fordham Early Learning. Could not agree with them more about the vision that it took us to get to that. And Ms. Thrower was here, I believe, and Reverend Cummings was here. I remember Mr. Browning had a lot of hesitancy and concern about having three-year-olds and all, and we had lots of conversation about that. But it took a lot of vision to get us to have an early learning academy. So that four or five years ago conversation, grateful for that, could not agree more. We need more of them. And so I also want to say, though, I also agree, moving it to Retic is not going to be ideal. I agree with that wholeheartedly. What I asked them to look at today, and I'm actually, all the people that are emailing me, I'm saying, what about this? What would you think of this? And just to get feedback additionally, because if they're giving me feedback, I'm asking them questions. I'm interested in the conversation of potentially locating Fordham Early Learning Academy on the Oak Crest Campus and having a school within a school that is also a campus that is underutilized and has space. I don't know what that looks like, but my communication to everyone that's emailed me that I'm emailing back, having a location that is now where Fordham Early Learning is, that is built for 750 students and having an approval that Fordham Early Learning has that can only serve up to about 250, 260, we're never going to be able to meet that. And so without having another school come on to, a charter school come on to that campus, we have to get really serious about what that looks like. I mean, there are some other things about the co-location that that location may not qualify for, but I'm interested in talking about that. Simultaneously, I'm interested in talking about South Side Early Learning. I mean, you guys have heard me say it and I'm serious about it. And we talked about potentially an idea of what that would look like and how that could happen even in 2027. And I think that having those two conversations simultaneously, because all of this would be happening, you know, in the 26, 27, or 27, 28 school years, those people who are already driving so far to where they're driving to, if we had one on the South Side, they wouldn't have to drive as far and we know that the need dictates it. So that, I just wanted to float that idea because I don't want to have it on Thursday and you're all like, huh, gives you two days to think about it, what that looks like and figure out if that would work. I think there's a lot of moving pieces that could then happen. So I've told folks that I believe that we have four proposals on the table and I think what we'll land on is a combination of something that may not actually be what has been presented yet. And we'll get the whole presentation, all that. So last comment I wanted to make was about Ocala Jesus Fest. And kudos and grateful to Joyvon Jimenez and his vision for what that looked like. And I know they were at Lake Shore High School last year, but the Rooms Living Group that came to Bellevue High School on their football field on Sunday, all of the vendors and all of the things that happened. I know there were some things at the district that had to happen to make that. And so just grateful to the team. More than 2,300 people were on the campus at Bellevue High School on Sunday evening and it was just a wonderful, wonderful time of praise and worship. They rented the space, so it wasn't like we'd, anyway. So I just wanted to say shout out to Joyvon. He's a Bellevue High alum, so I know that was really special to him to be on the football field where he went to school and it just was a really, really great time. So I wanted to say I was grateful that we have the opportunity and ability to participate in organizations like that with Rooms Living and the Ocala Jesus Fest that I'm sure will come to another school potentially next year and that is the hope. So, to all ahead? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. And I actually just have a few very short things. I'm going to take care of the one I feel is most important first. Dr. Curley is looking for a volunteer for the Code of Conduct Committee. So we have anybody that, oh, Ms. Thrower is raising her hand.
As well go out with a bang.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. I will send that off to him, if not this evening, in the morning. Thank you very much. I know that can be a labor-intensive committee, so thank you for volunteering.
Can't be as much fun as instructional calendar, so you guys have a lot to look forward to.
Good, good, good. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Thrower. I appreciate that. And then I just have a few thank yous that I wanted to share. And so really thankful for the staff and families that showed up to talk about learning this morning at Fordham Learning Academy. And I'm just grateful that they're involved in their child's education. It's valuable and I wish more families and staff members and people in the community would come and talk to us about what's important to them, what's working, what change they'd like to see because, you know, many heads putting in new ideas. I think there's value in that. So just want to say thank you to their team and for joining us this evening. I appreciated their commentary and the stories that they had to share. Did want to say thank you to our district staff. A lot of them are here before us today. It has been, for lack of a better word, we had a couple of humdinger days, the end of last week and then the beginning of this week. And so you are never off. You're always, always on call, always working. And so I just want to thank you all. They're behind me on the screen here, so it's kind of hard to see your faces. But just want to thank you all for showing up and doing what's best for our students and our staff and our schools each and every day. So I appreciate you. I did want to say Thursday's, this Thursday is a very busy day. So I had it pulled up here, but it jumped around, so give me just one second. All right, so with our early school board meeting and then an administrative briefing and work session, we also have ICROC meeting here this afternoon and then our Town Hall gathering at Osceola around 5:45. So just wanted to make sure everybody remembered, had those on your calendar if you're interested in attending. And then my last thank you is really to our schools and our auditing teams because last year I had a lot of questions. We were having a lot of mistakes, a lot of challenges in the auditing and reports from our schools. And so we're really already seeing a turnaround on that and just really grateful, whatever your teams are doing, I think it's making a difference, a positive change in what's happening for our secretaries and their teams as we move forward to make sure the money is done correctly, especially as we move into site-based budgeting. And so, Board, that is all I have. And if we have no further business, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero and this meeting is adjourned at 7:57. Thank you, everyone.